Good evening, and welcome to the October 5th Stillwater City Council meeting. I call the October 5th meeting to order, and would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next, I would like to call Fire Marshal Neil Moore and Deputy Fire Marshal Steve Sylvester up to the podium, please.
That's great.
All right.
Just right here is fine. And you want them facing out this way. And stand right here in front of Sparky. I'm gonna try to read really fast, okay? We have a proclamation tonight for Stillwater Fire Department. Whereas, home fires killed 2,755 people in the US in 2013, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 369,500 home fires. And whereas, working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, as three out of five home fire deaths result from fires in properties without working smoke alarms. And whereas, Stillwater residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of the home, including alert devices that meet the needs of people who are deaf or hard of hearing, and practice and develop a home fire escape plan to be prepared to survive a fire. And whereas, the message during Fire Prevention Week 2015, "Hear the beep when you sleep." Every bedroom needs a working smoke alarm. Reminds us that we need working smoke alarms to give us the time to get out safely. Now, therefore, I, Gina J. Noble, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim the week of October 4th through the 10th, 2015, as Fire Prevention Week in the city, and urge all citizens to install smoke alarms in every bedroom, outside each sleeping area, and on every level of the home, including the basement, and to support the many public activities and efforts in Stillwater's fire and emergency services. Thank you to our firefighters and fire department, and thanks for everybody for being here and for Sparky.
Just want to thank everybody for coming. We appreciate this. This is a big week for the fire department. We have a lot of activity planned around the town. We're doing skits at all the elementary schools, and we're also going to each elementary school. So, thank everybody for coming, and we appreciate it.
We should have a group picture with Sparky.
Yeah, I think so.
We should have a group picture with Sparky.
Oh, yeah.
We could have a group picture with Sparky.
Gina, or Joe likes it. Do a selfie.
Thank you all.
Hey Gina.
That's great.
Elaine and Pat want to do a photo with Sparky.
Yeah.
I know what Elaine does.
Yeah, I really do. I'll get it later. No, no, that's all right. It's all right. It's all right. We're good. We're good.
You were that close.
I was that close, yeah. I was gonna be by myself. You guys could've joined me.
Gina was gonna tell you about that.
Yeah, I can tell y'all were excited.
Okay, Item B is OSU Homecoming 2015, still loyal, still true. And I would like to call Chris Bachelder and Jimmy Hudson to the podium.
Kinda hard to follow Sparky.
Very hard to follow Sparky. You want to take a picture with me later?
Yeah, I'll take a picture with you too, Chris.
Counsel, Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to be with you tonight. We're always excited this time of year. Fall brings many opportunities, not the least of which for the OSU Alumni Association is Homecoming 2015. My name is Chris Bachelder. I'm the President and CEO of the OSU Alumni Association. I'll let Jimmy introduce himself and tell you a little bit about himself in a few minutes. But we are very excited about Homecoming 2015, and the reason we wanted to be with you tonight is because our theme this year is Stillwater, Still Loyal, Still True. This is the first time that we have tried to incorporate the City of Stillwater into the Homecoming theme, and as such, following in the footsteps of people like Boone Pickens and Garth Brooks, Robin Ventura, Barry Sanders, we have invited our very own Mayor Gina Noble to be our Grand Marshal this year. We're very excited about that. She's gonna have a great weekend participating in all of our events, and very honored to have her agree to fill that role. We thought with the theme, it was fitting that for the first time, the Stillwater Mayor be invited to participate in that effect with us. So, thank you again for that.
Thank you. I'm very honored, very honored, and I represent the ordinary citizen.
I hear ya. We have a quick video welcome that we sent out to all of our alumni a few weeks ago that we thought we would show tonight, and then I'm gonna let Jimmy talk a little bit about the events of Homecoming Week, which remarkably is kicking off a week from Friday. I can't believe it's already here, and it's a very exciting time, not only for the university but the community as well. So, we'll show the video, and then I'll let Jimmy take it from there. Thank you again.
Thank you, Chris. Go Pokes!
All right. We have a very talented communications and marketing staff, and are very proud of that. Again, the OSU Alumni Association is proud to present Homecoming every year. As you can see from the video, some things change, but some always stay the same. And so, I'm also very proud of this young man, Jimmy Hudson, who is our Executive Director this year, wants to tell you a little bit about the events of Homecoming Week.
As Chris said, how are you? My name is Jimmy Hudson. I'm the Executive Director this year for Homecoming. This is my second year serving as a Homecoming Executive, and we chose the theme all the way back in January. And so, we sat down in January and decided that, you know, what better way to give thanks to the City of Stillwater than incorporating our theme, just as Chris said. And so, you know, we just appreciate everything that, you know, Stillwater Emergency Management, Rob Hill, David Casey does for us, Neil Moore, the Fire Department, and all of Stillwater PD, and the rest of the community. Without the community of Stillwater, Homecoming would not be the same, and Oklahoma State would not be the same. And so, in front of you, you have a calendar of events, and we will kick off on Sunday, October 18th, with the Dying of the Fountain. So, last year was the first year we kinda made this a formal event. We really had a big turnout with the community, and so this year, we're really trying to get the community out, and what better way than doing that than with a theme this year? And so, that'll be that Sunday at 5:30 there at Library Lawn at the Fountain. The next big community thing will be Harvest Carnival, and that is just an opportunity for the residential halls and the Greek houses and student organizations to put on a carnival for the kids of Stillwater. And so, it's always a great, great turnout, and we give back to Harvest 2, which is a great philanthropic organization here in Stillwater. And so, you know, those two events there, and then we'll go right into Walk Around that Friday. And so, and that whole Friday is full of events, and so you can see that calendar there. And then Saturday will be the Sea of Orange Parade, which this year will be starting at 9th on 9th and Main, and so we're moving it up to 9th and Main this year for safety. And so, that is what we will be doing. To be announced on the time, depending on kickoff. And so, we're hoping we know about kickoff and game time soon, but until then, we'll just kinda, we'll release that. So, it'll be either 8:00 AM or 9:00 AM that Saturday. So, again, I just want to, you know, there's a calendar there for you guys. You can find all this stuff at orangeconnection.org/homecoming. But I just want to end with just to tell you guys, thank you so, so much for everything that you do, for the Alumni Association, for myself, and the rest of the Homecoming Executive Team, and all the students at Oklahoma State. Without Stillwater, OSU is not what it is today. And so, although our time here in Stillwater is four years, the memories are for a lifetime. So, thank you guys so much, and we look forward to seeing you all. And thank you for being the Grand Marshal this year. It's going to be a great, great year, so.
Thank you. I'm so honored, thank you. And I would just like to say, you just said without Stillwater. Well, without OSU, Stillwater wouldn't be what it is today. So, we thank you, and we thank all of the students and the Greek community, and everybody who's been planning this for a year, and especially the OSU Alumni Association. And I better say thanks to Chase Carter for doing the video, because, you know. Thank you, Chase.
He's watching too.
I know he is. That's why I'm saying it.
Well, thank you all.
Thank you. We look forward to.
Mayor?
Yes.
You know, it's not a funny thing, but it's just a fact. It's amazing that when the alums come back and you get to talking to them, you know, you would think they're gonna talk about their favorite class and university, but they talk about where they lived off-campus, they talked about where their part-time job was, and who they knew, and they are proud to tell you they can still remember their phone number. Stillwater thanks. This is such an appropriate Homecoming theme this year. It's just really good.
I cannot wait to say, "Welcome home."
And I want your autograph after the parade. And when we're, when us peons are standing on the sideline, will you promise to wave to us?
Throw candy.
Can you do that? Can you throw candy? No, oh, no throwing candy.
Not even for us? Come on. It'll be great.
Yeah. Fun time.
Marshal Noble.
I'm very excited. And they're gone, so we move on. That takes us to the Consent Docket. And councilors, does anyone wish to remove an item?
Most should approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Docket. Please vote. And the Consent Docket is approved with a vote of five to zero. That moves us to Public Comments on Agenda Items Not Scheduled for Public Hearings, and we have two speakers tonight regarding Ordinance Number 3326, which we will deal with later. We have Kent Bradley. Would you please come to the podium and state your name and address, and you have three minutes, please.
Kent Bradley, 3025 South Isabel Point Drive. But I'm really here in official capacity of Penn County District 3 County Commissioner. The annexed property on the northwest quarter there, more or less bordering Jardo and Burris Road, right now is maintained by District 3, and I want to make sure that all the councilors are aware of, when you do annex that property, any adjoining right-of-way, the full right-of-way 66 feet, is to be maintained by the city, which will be no longer maintained by the county. And one reason this is kinda particular here is because Burris Road now, east of 177 for a half a mile, it should be maintained by city. But right now, I think we just, the county, we just grade it for convenience sake. But there is no gravel whatsoever on that half-mile. I recently gravelled a half-mile that's been annexed, so I just want to make everybody aware here that on Jardo, for at least half a mile there, Burris, that the city will be needing to maintain that road now. And that's one of my main points.
Okay.
Anybody have any other questions?
Any questions? Thank you so much.
I think Ed will speak a little bit on his behalf. He's just afraid that once y'all take, the city takes it over, that he won't be able to do anything, like put in another driveway, or, you know, he's gonna have to get a permit then, and he's afraid that that section of road will be like the west section of Burris. So, please make sure you take care of it. And the others along Jardo, too. Because what that does, it falls back on me, or District 3, that's out in the country and it's not being maintained, then they say, "Okay, the commissioners aren't maintaining that road," when truly, it's the cities that should be taking care of it. So, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next, we have Ed Shever. And please state your name and your address.
Okay, I'm Edward L. Shever, and my mailing address is 3118 East Burris Road, but also the GP is 1520 East Burris Road, same mailbox, same field, but different numbers. I own the southeast quarter, Section 24 Township 20 Range 2 East, and I was here at the last meeting, and I guess I don't understand the procedures or whatever it is, but when, at the last meeting, my concern was over Burris Road and maintenance and stuff like that, and at where it runs past my house, and at the end of the meeting, I felt that I could not have voiced my opinion anymore after you had your vote. So, that's why I'm back here tonight. I paid taxes on the road, to the center of the road, I understand, and if you annexed it from fence line to fence line, my concern now is if I decide to put in a new driveway, which I plan to do next year, I've gotta come to the city and get permits. Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I was afraid of. And what I want, I'd rather the road would stay with the County Commissioner, because I know how to get ahold of him. And I can call him, and he answers his phone, and I don't have to mess around and take off work to come to City Hall. And I'd like for it to stay, my part anyway, not be annexed, and my half of the road. And I, what I want, I'd rather the road would stay with the County Commissioner, because I know how to get ahold of him. And I can call him, and he answers his phone, and I don't have to mess around and take off work to come to City Hall. And I'd like for it to stay, my part anyway, not be annexed, and my half of the road. So, I don't care what prime land has to do with their property, that's fine with me. It's zoned as ag, or will be, I guess, but I, my land, I'd just send it not be annexed on my half of the road. And I think Mr. Bradley pretty well covered the rest of it about not being gravelled on that one half-mile of it and everything else. So, thank you all, but I would appreciate it if you just leave my half of the road alone.
Thank you, Mr. Shever. Mr. Galloway.
Just make a quick point. If the council does complete the annexation, I don't think we have a choice. The law now says we take the road. But I just wanted to tell you that, make sure, if it's annexed, I will give you my number and the street department's number, so you'll have direct telephone numbers to people you can talk to. I know Kent's been really great at answering your calls, and we want to do the same thing if we're responsible, but we will.
I also want him to know he can get ahold of the city councilors and the mayor as well. Our numbers are published. Okay, that takes us to Number 7, Public Hearings, and we have, let's see, we have received public comment regarding a request for a specific use permit to allow a church use at 1220 South Blakely Street in the RSS Residential Small Lot Single Family District, Mr. Dorman, did we have good notice on this?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Galloway.
Yes, I'd like to have Aaron Baggily give you the report on this, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Aaron Baggily, Development Services, here to speak with you about this use permit for a church in a residential zoning district. Here's an outline of the parcel that is requesting the use of having a church within a residential district. This is 12th Avenue to the north, if I can find my mouse, to the north. This is Blakely Street on the east here. To the east of Blakely Street is the new Stillwater Medical Center Campus that is currently under construction and development. If you've recently been in the area, you've seen a lot of construction activity in this area. This is Copper Creek Subdivision. Along 12th Avenue, we have office zoning, and then we have residential single-family zoning as well. Twelve, the parcel identified as 1215, 12th Avenue is the attention outlet for this subdivision. This is where all the storm water flows to this area, and it's still a zone RSS. As I mentioned, you have office to the east and office to the northwest of this area. The applicant has came in requesting the use of a church in a residential zone. This is a preliminary site plan, very preliminary at this point. I believe it includes 64 parking spaces, which is pretty much adequate for the building that they are requesting at this time. And here is a rendering of the church as they have designed it so far. And for a specific use permit, generally, the building outline to parking outline stays the same. If there is major changes to this, if they want to do an expansion later on, they have to come back to Planning Commission and City Council for approval if you do approve this tonight. The findings are an SUP is required for a church in residential zoning, access to 12th Street via Blakely Street. This parcel is adjacent to office zoning and uses, and this use is consistent with our comprehensive C3 plan. Does Council have any questions for staff at this point?
There's a church that's just to the west of, I mean, there's already a church on 12th Avenue also, isn't there? Would that be the, I think it's right there, right before Western.
So, are they gonna be side?
So, it's not a, yeah, west.
Are they just side by side?
No, a little bit farther down.
Yeah, it's farther west.
I believe it's closer to Western Avenue.
So, it's not an unusual?
No. We generally, there's many churches within residential zoning throughout the city. Generally, we, it's a specific use permit, because it's more intensive use, but they generally go in residential areas or commercial areas, depending. They cannot go into industrial areas. It's about the only place churches are not allowed within the city.
Councilors?
No question.
Okay, so I will open the public hearing, and there is one request to speak. Mr., let's see, let me get this right. Ryan Baker, please. State your name and address.
My name is Ryan Baker. I live at 4718 West Country Club Drive. Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's great to be here. I'm the pastor of Grace Presbyterian Church. We've been there under two years, and this is Dr. Tom Carnes and Marson Carnes. They are Toms on the Building Committee. Sorry, we are here to just say thank you for hearing us out. This process has been going on for five years. We bought the land from the developer with the idea of putting a church specifically in the residential area, and so we're just very excited that we have the funds now to move forward, and thank you all for your time.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? I will close the public hearing and ask Mr. Baggily to come back up. And is there a recommendation?
Planning Commission recommended approval of this specific use permit.
Okay, councilors, any questions? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to approve CC-15-117. Please vote. And that is approved with a vote of five to zero. CC-15-117 is approved. That moves this to Item B, Received Public Comment Regarding a Request for a Specific Use Permit to Allow an Electronic Message Sign (LED) Adjacent to Residentially Zoned Properties for Property Addressed at 2221 West 6th Avenue. This is CC-15-116. Mr. Dorman, did we have good notice on this?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Galloway.
Yes, I'd like to, again, ask Mr. Baggily to present the report and explain the sign and the application, and all the details. Mr. Baggily?
All right, we have another specific use permit tonight. This one's a little different. In order to permit a LED, our lighted sign, electronic message sign, adjacent to a residential zoning designation, we require a specific use permit. The applicant is Howerton's Auto, which is the parcel outlined in purple here, just east of the Western Avenue, or Western Street, 6th Avenue intersection. They've requested it, because to the north across 6th Avenue is RSS Residential zoning. The applicant has requested a LED sign. It, the threshold has to be under 40% of the sign is LED. This sign is approximately 35% electronic. It meets our code, and this is an example of the sign layout, and that's part of the sign application that they have submitted. Planning Commission findings were adjacent to a residentially zoned district, thus requiring an SUP. It's under the 40% threshold of the electronics portion of the sign, and this sign application meets all other code requirements. Does Council have any questions for staff?
There's no other lighted signs around there, right? I can't remember.
I drove by, I didn't see any.
I don't think there is.
I do not believe there's any in close adjacency to that. There's some closer to downtown Stillwater.
Yeah, there's some to the west, I believe, but it's just.
There's some far out west, closer to, I think, the Sonics, beside Thomas Ford.
Yeah, the banks.
Has one. The banks have a couple down there as well, but in that area, it's more office parks versus commercial.
So, this isn't the first thing you're gonna see when they pull into town, an auto sign?
How tall is this?
Overall, height is 18 feet 11 inches, so 19 feet. So, it falls under our threshold of sign height limit.
What is our threshold? I'm sorry.
35 feet.
So, it's half.
So, it's half.
Pretty much half.
Okay. Councilors, any other questions? Okay, I will open the public hearing on this. We have one speaker. Mr. Adams, would you please come forward? State your name and address.
My name is Lemuel Adams, out of 6016 West Old Mogi Avenue in Muskogee, Oklahoma. We're the ones doing the LED display for Howerton Auto Sales. Purchase a sign from us, we're trying to help him increase his business and keep him in business, so we're giving him an advertising tool. So, I also just want to say just thank you for hearing us out and allowing us to submit this and to stand for you today. If you have any other questions, I can answer them for you. If not, we're just happy to be here.
Okay, councilors, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I will close the public hearing and ask Mr. Baggily to come back. Is there a recommendation?
Yes, Planning Commission recommended approval for this SUP.
Motion to accept, planning council's, commission's recommendation. Say it.
We have a motion and a second to accept CC-15-116. Please vote. So it falls under a threshold of sign height limit.
What is our threshold? I'm sorry.
Thirty-five feet.
So it's half.
So it's half.
Pretty much half.
Okay. Councillors, any other questions? Okay, I will open the public hearing on this. We have one speaker. Mr. Adams, would you please come forward? State your name and address.
My name is Lemuel Adams, out of 6016 West Old Mogi Avenue in Muskogee, Oklahoma. We're the ones doing the LED display for Howarton Auto Sales. Purchase a sign from us, we're trying to help him increase his business and keep him in business, so we're giving him an advertising tool. So I also just want to say just thank you for hearing us out and allowing us to submit this and to stand for you today. If you have any other questions, I can answer them for you. If not, we're just happy to be here.
Okay, councillors, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I will close the public hearing and ask Mr. Baggily to come back. Is there a recommendation?
Yes, Planning Commission recommended approval for this SUP.
Motion to accept, planning council's, commission's recommendation. Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept CC-15-116. Please vote. And that is approved with a vote of five to zero on CC-15-116. And that moves us to general orders. Mr. Galloway.
Yes, we have a report tonight. Don Lawrence from the, one of our public-private partnership reports. This is the Lake McMurtry, Friends of Lake McMurtry. And I'd like to ask them to make the presentation to the City Council, please.
Well, absolutely, with pleasure. Mayor, council, good evening. My name is Jared Aviles. I am the park manager out at Lake McMurtry. I just want to say thanks for your time tonight and giving us a platform to showcase our accomplishments. We're very excited to be here. Throughout tonight, we will talk about things we've accomplished out there, our lake staff and the projects they've been working on, some of our marketing and outreach efforts, our community engagement, our future plans and some of our usage statistics. So two summers ago, Lake McMurtry Friends tested the waters, pun intended, with kayak rentals. And we had great success with that our first summer. So we expanded upon that this last year. We implemented stand-up paddle boards and we got an overwhelmingly positive response with that. So we've installed permanent kayak and paddleboard storage at Lake McMurtry because we want to continue that as a permanent recreation activity. Our staff has been working hard to improve the fishing habitats out of Lake McMurtry. I don't know if any of you have been out there to view the lake levels recently, but Mother Nature was very kind to us and she brought our lake levels almost back to normal. And so our staff harvested invasive red cedars and strategically placed them throughout the lake to enhance the fishing viability. And as always, we're looking to give the lake parking, or our park, facelift. And what I mean by that is we're going through the park and updating it. So what we've done this last year is added Wi-Fi to our new RV loop. And so we now have eight free Wi-Fi spots in our recreation areas for our campers. We've added and expanded our tent camping on our west recreation area. We've also leveled and expanded older RV pads to allow for the bigger OSU posse campers to come in and camp with us. We've also added family grill to the east pavilion with updated picnic tables. And with the new water levels, we've identified some shallow areas in the lake to allow our boaters and water traffic to traverse our waters safely. And one of the biggest accomplishments, I want to pat us on the back for, is our new website, lakemcMurtry.com. I have to give the credit to our marketing director, Jessica Kincanon. She worked very hard on this. And this is a tool for Lake McMurtry to make us so much more accessible to the public. Folks can get on there now and reserve campsites, much like a hotel room. But much more than that, they can buy merchandise, Lake McMurtry t-shirts and hats. They can see our blog. We're blogging about the things we're doing. Fishing reports are on there, so events and times are on there. So everything, you know, we've got out on the web and we're very excited about that. And my favorite tool about our new website is the fact that folks can now come to our park and buy a day permit online. So after hours, when our offices are closed, they have to stop at our collection box to pay cash for their $6 day permit. Well, not anymore. Not everybody carries cash. And so we've used our website to help mitigate that problem and they can come, use our free Wi-Fi, jump online and use their credit card to buy a day pass. And it's been such a great tool for us. Not only do we carry out projects at Lake McMurtry, our staff, but we also engage the community. We get, we work with all kinds of different community members to do work out of Lake McMurtry. We wanted to highlight a few tonight. We had a project from troop 828. They had a member of their troop working on his eagle and he chose Lake McMurtry as his site. He decided to find an eroded campsite and he wanted to refurbish that and make it, again, more accessible to the community. So he built level tent pads. And what these are are elevated surfaces that are very level and very comfortable for someone to set up a tent. They also reduce erosion and that has become by far one of our most popular tent camping sites out there. Another organization we work extensively with is the Red Dirt Peddlers. You've probably heard about this group. They've been around Stillwater for quite some time. They promote mountain biking and they're the primary volunteer group that maintains the 28 miles of trails. And Lake McMurtry's trail system is very, very unique. It's one of our biggest draws. We get folks from all around the state and even out of state. I've had folks from Texas, Kansas and Arkansas come visit us. And so we're very happy to have this group so passionate about maintaining the trails. And we wanted to highlight one quick project they worked on was reclaiming an old section of trail. They harvested invasive red cedars and used those as water bars along this eroded section of trail. And that helps to sustain the soils, deposit sediment and enhance the sustainability of that trail system. Not only are we taking on projects and improving things, we're also an area of education on top of recreation. And we're very excited to be a part of this and we wanted to highlight it. The OSU College of Veterinary Medicine rehabilitated a very majestic American white pelican and they chose Lake McMurtry as their site of releaseal. And in conjunction with that, a local Boy Scout group gave a wildlife presentation to some folks, to the folks that came out to that. And so we were very happy to be a part of that. We host events out of Lake McMurtry. We keep pretty busy engaging the public. And by far, our biggest event is our mud runs. And I'm sure you've probably heard about those and seen pictures on the web. They're such a blast. We hosted two mud runs last year just because we had such positive response from it. Our first mud run was in the fall. That was a partnered run and it was youth only and we drew, we, excuse me, we had 800 kids come out over a two-day period and run through our challenge course and it was a blast. And after that event, we had moms and dads asking us, hey, when can we run? When can we go through this? And we thought, why not? So we turned around that next spring and we hosted a one-day event and we drew 400 people to that event. And moms and dads and brothers and sisters, they were crawling through the mud, they were climbing over ropes. It was just such a blast to see and we love putting that event on and we'll be doing it again this next year. Another annual event for us that draws quite a big crowd is our spring celebration. We host this every spring. It's a very festive celebration where we promote the park and get people thinking about Lake McMurtry for the summer season. We couldn't do it without the organizations listed there. We partner with a lot of different organizations to host this event. We had Oklahoma Highway Patrol fly their helicopter out and land out there and show that off to the kids. The fire department came out, the police department came out, 4H, Boy Scouts. We had face painting, cooking, music. It's just a real fun time and we enjoy doing that event very much. Some smaller ongoing projects you'll see out at Lake McMurtry, again, trying to engage the community. We offer volunteer trash cleanup days. We get a lot of college kids that attend these because what we do is we feed our volunteers. So we do get a lot of college kids that come out, they pick up trash for us and in turn, we feed them and help keep the park very, very clean. We give educational programs. We also love to work with OSU and be a site of research. There's zebra muscle research going on, invasive tamarisk, salt cedar research, there's water quality research. So we're a big proponent of that. And we also have different community members who seek us out as their venue site. I want to highlight one here and that is the Tulsa Area Trail Ultra Runners. They come down from Tulsa once a year and they host a half marathon on the east side of Lake McMurtry. So we're not only hosting events, people are coming to us to host their events there as well. And so how are people finding out about us? Well, we're very connected on the web with our new website. We're heavily into social media with our Facebook page, Twitter, Instagram. But we really love to get out in the community and talk to people face-to-face, handshakes, hand out advertisements, much like the ones I hope you guys have sitting in front of you today. If there's an event such as that, we're there. Lights on Stillwater is a big one for us and Women's Night Out, we do that one as well. And if you like to listen to the radio and you enjoy listening to me right now, you can find us on 105.1 every Friday morning at 8:45. Myself, Dan and Jessica, we all get on there and we talk about the lake with Steve Daniels and it's just a really fun time. And speaking of homecoming, we're going to be in the parade. We did the parade last year. We love to be a part of this community and we're going to be in the parade again this year, so give us a big shout out if you see us. We wanted to pass along some of our usage statistics to you guys. Now that we've had a couple of years under our belt to track our sales, we wanted to present this to you all because we've been working really hard and we're very humbled by our numbers. Our annual pass sales doubled from 2012 to this last year, from 200 pass member, annual pass members to nearly 400 annual pass members. So we're very excited to see that people are actually investing back into Lake McMurtry. Our annual pass is $65 and people are realizing that's a great investment for a ton of fun because it lasts an entire year. They can come out and swim, hike, kayak, disc golf, mountain bike, fish for 65 bucks. And on top of that, the annual pass also covers tent camping. And referring back to our wonderful website, if they get online with their annual pass, they can type in their specific code and the website will give them their discount for free. And they don't have to do anything but get on the web with their annual pass to camp with us. So we're very, very humbled by this and it just made us feel really good about what we're doing in our efforts out of Lake McMurtry. Our largest revenue stream is by far our day passes. As you can see on the bottom right there, our numbers in 2012 were around 2,700 day passes sold. This last year, that increased to 6,500. So a really big jump from year one to year three and we were, again, very humbled by that. And in the short time we've had our website up and running since January, it had, our online sales have grown to over 25% of our total sales. So just making Lake McMurtry more accessible has really propelled ourselves out there. I wanted to highlight some of our capital improvements. On the right-hand side is a chart of all the physical improvements we've done to the lake. And how we do that is through our capital improvement program. At the end of each quarter, what we do is we transfer any remaining funds into a capital improvement account. That is how we fund our projects that we implement out at Lake McMurtry. And you can see on the right there, a number of different things that we've done. Everything from disc golf to new RV sites to firings, that's how we fund those things. And so how do we figure out where to go from here, our future plans? Well, referring back to my favorite accomplishment over the last year, our website, we have surveys that are sent out to our customers after they camp with us to tell us how we're doing and things they want to see us improve upon. And so that helps to dictate where we're going to go and what we're going to do. One thing we would like to see and our customers would like to see out of Lake McMurtry is new shower facility on the east side. Currently, our west recreation area has a shower facility and our east side does not. And so that picture on the right-hand side is an actual architectural rendering of a facility that we're considering. We also want to continue to make the facelifts to Lake McMurtry. We've already implemented our new firings this year and we're going to be doing new picnic tables over this next year. We want to make the park more navigable for people. That's one thing that they tell us they would like to see out there. Our staff has been working very hard this last summer on a very extensive signage plan for the park and we hope to implement that this winter. And we also want to continue to enhance our wonderful trail system. So we want to connect some trails via some bridges and make longer trails at Lake McMurtry. Some new activities you'll see coming up and currently is waterfowl hunting. We currently have that and have added that back to Lake McMurtry and we've had really positive response from that. We also want to coordinate with the wildlife department and add a 3D archery range. And we also want to, again, enhance our bike trails and have a beginner mountain biking course so the little ones can come out and feel comfortable riding the trails and introduce them to a new sport possibly and get them physically active. Some new events you'll see coming up is a benefit concert. One of the local sororities has chosen us as their fundraising site. And a disc golf tournament this fall on our disc golf courses. And if you're wondering who that woodland creature is in that photo, that's our new family member mascot for Lake McMurtry, Sammy the Sasquatch. So he'll be on our homecoming parade float, so if you see him, please wave. And that pretty much wraps it up for us and I just wanted to open it up and see if you guys have any questions for us tonight.
Does he hide behind trees out there and scare small children?
The intention's not to scare, no. We try very hard not to scare children.
I want to commend you on the website. I have some friends who are avid campers and decided to try out Lake McMurtry. They'd not been out there before and ended up staying two nights and they said that the day pass, the online, was phenomenal. They were able to do it easily and they really enjoyed their time out there. We also have some great friends and donors, since we're talking about homecoming tonight, that travel with their RV for all the OSU home football games. And they have chosen to stay out at Lake McMurtry even though a spot has opened up.
We have a, we have a big following of folks that do come out and they camp for game day weekends. And it's a big deal. They put their satellites on their RVs and they watch the game and they hang lights and they have a really good time. And I'm kind of jealous I'm not there with them every weekend, to be honest.
But congratulations.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity and thank you for your time tonight. Appreciate it.
I really appreciate your presentation. So well done.
Thank you.
And just, it's very exciting and I love the kayaking.
Oh, I do, too. Have you tried stand-up paddleboards yet?
No, I don't think I could do that.
Everybody's scared of them, but I promise they're not as hard as they look.
I just like to sit.
Yeah, I don't blame you there. You're doing good at that.
I really like the website. I've been looking at the website and I, Dan, I did not picture you as a bowtie guy, but you know what?
He rocks the bowtie pretty well, doesn't he?
This website is awesome. Did you guys design it yourselves?
Jessica, I have to give the credit to her. She worked on that very hard and it has been such a great tool for us. We have loved it. We've got such a great response for it. Like I said, you know, customers do surveys and that helps us to figure out where we need to put funds into. And so I'm just so very happy with that website.
Great job. You're doing awesome.
Yeah, you're pointing to me, you know what I'm going to say. Another out of the ashes, terrible budget year and we get another huge success story with the private and public partnerships. So congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity. We love it.
Well, I have to say something too. I love your enthusiasm. I loved the report, but what you guys are doing out there is phenomenal.
Thank you.
And we appreciate the partnership very much. You are the role model for partnerships and you show why they work. And I love your online presence. Very good job. And I've heard so many great things about the mutter, so.
It's a fantastic event. I actually took my nephew through the course this last year and it's fun. It is a lot of fun. I, next year I might wear goggles.
Maybe you can get Mayor Noble out to do it.
We'd love to have you all out there.
She would be willing to be your grand marshal.
Getting volunteered for a lot of different things.
We could call her mutter.
We have a bunch of comedians up here. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you for your time tonight.
Congratulations on your success.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to ordinances. On first reading, Mr. Dorman, ordinance number 3326.
Ordinance annexing property generally located in the northeast quarter of Section 25, township 20 North, range 2 East of the Indian Meridian.
Councillors?
So we can't give him his half?
I will have to research that. The statute says that we have to annex the entire width of the right of way, but I will take another look at it and I will also sit down with the council for the county and see if he has any ideas about maybe trying to accommodate this request, but, and that can always be changed on second reading. So I'm recommending that you go ahead and approve this on first reading tonight or advance it to second reading rather.
Okay, I appreciate if you would look into that. Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
To advance.
Advance. Second reading, ordinance number 3326.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance. Ordinance number 3326 to second reading, please vote. And ordinance number 3326 advances to second reading with a vote of five to zero. Item B, ordinance number 3327 on first reading, Mr. Dorman.
Ordinance zoning, annex property generally located in the northeast quarter of Section 25, township 20 North, range 2 East of the Indian Meridian as a agriculture district.
Councillors, discussion?
Motion to advance, second reading, ordinance number 3327. Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance, ordinance number 3327 to second reading, please vote. And ordinance number 3327 advances to second reading with a vote of five to zero. Item C, ordinance number 3328 on first reading, Mr. Dorman.
Ordinance rezoning a portion of attractive land located at 799 East Mercury Avenue from IG General Industrial District to NTZ Neighborhood Transition Zone.
Councillors?
Motion to move to second reading?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance, ordinance number 3328 to second reading. Please vote. And ordinance number 3328 advances to second reading with a vote of five to zero. Item D, ordinance number 3329 on first reading, Mr. Dorman.
Ordinance rezoning a portion of attractive land located at 799 East Mercury Avenue from IG General Industrial District to CS Commercial Shopping District.
Councillors?
Motion to advance, second reading. Motion to advance, second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance, ordinance number 3329, to second reading, please vote. And ordinance number 3329 advances to second reading with a vote of five to zero. That moves us to item E, ordinance number 3330. On first reading, Mr. Dorman.
This is the texting ordinance that was requested last week. And I put it on first reading in the event that you decide that you want to go ahead and go forward with it tonight. But I would just make a few points about it. You've had a chance to look at it, I hope. The texting ordinance is basically a mirror image of the state statute, which was an act, which was adopted in the spring 2015 legislative session, and which will become effective on November 1st. And basically, what it is, is a variation of what we call a reckless driving or inattentive driving type ordinance. In and of that, in itself, it basically just targets a specific type of activity. And if the officer sees that, then they are, they can tick it in some instances. As I mentioned, it mirrors state law. There are some other cities that have adopted an ordinance very similar to this. Norman, Edmund, Oklahoma City. I think Moore has also done that. And we are required to basically follow what the state law says because the courts have deemed time and time again that driving, or excuse me, traffic laws are a matter of statewide concern. So there's, it's important that we be uniform in the way that we adopt those. So we don't have a lot of room to change things out. Basically, when this thing applies, the way it is written is "when you're using a handheld electronic communication device to manually compose, send, or read an electronic text message while the motor vehicle is in motion." So when the car's rolling, that's when the ordinance kicks in. The vehicle must be moving, and that's a basic component of the state law. And the driver must be manually composing, sending, or reading a text message. And it applies equally to texting, emails, and all the various forms of messaging, such as, what do they call it, Twitter? And I'm better than novice at this.
Social media.
Actually, I haven't mastered texting yet. If I'm going, I just hand the phone to my nine-year-old daughter and ask her to do it.
When the instance, when a vehicle should be moving, but it's not, like at a stoplight that turns green, this doesn't apply?
Well, the argument is that if, if the light is, is red, and you're simply sitting, the vehicle is resting, then yes, you could sit there and text because the vehicle's not moving. But if the light turns green, you need to be moving. And if you're texting while you're doing that, then you're violating the ordinance.
Okay, good.
If your vehicle remains at the intersection and doesn't move while you finish the text, you're obstructing a public way. It's best to just stop until you get somewhere where you can pull off the road and do it safely.
And soon it will be the law that you need to go to the side of the road.
Yes.
You cannot do this anymore.
Mr. Dorman, could you explain the benefit of having the same law as the state?
Sure. A lot of times you will, an officer will make a stop, and they will write multiple offenses. And if, if we don't adopt a city ordinance, then all of these types of offenses that are written would be booked to the county. So you will have instances where you will have charges that are sent to the county, and you would have charges that are sent here. And that can create problems. And one of the problems it can create is that if you have two different courts ruling on, particularly in an accident case, where you have two different courts that are ruling on the various aspects of what happened, you can have inconsistent results. And if you are in an accident, and you later have to go to court to protect your, your rights, you know, in the liability case, that can be a real problem for you. So it's just better to have all of these things looked in at the same place because it simplifies things.
So, I know that the state law goes into effect in November. Is there any way that we can make this ordinance go into effect on some kind of emergency?
You could adopt an emergency clause and have the emergency clause go into, have the ordinance go into effect on a specific date. It still has to be published, and it still has to be read. Assuming you first read it tonight, and you did the second reading on the 19th, you could adopt the emergency clause on the 19th. And in that scenario, then it would publish sometime later that week, and we could have a specific effective date for November 1st. And that seems to be the trend that the other cities are following.
Is that okay with?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I would like to ask that we do that.
What's the fine?
The fine is $100, and then costs can be assessed over and above that, which are capped at $49. $18 of that goes to the Department of Public Safety and the OSBI for maintenance of the APIS, the fingerprint computer system. The other money is, is taking, pays for administrative costs locally. $5 goes to a law enforcement training fund.
So let's note, this isn't a big money-making thing for the city. It's safety.
Municipal court is not a moneymaker for the city. If you look at the budget, we're, in comparison to most cities, we're way below. So this is not about that.
This is a safety, it's a safety measure.
Safety issue, and it's quite frankly, a convenience issue for both the officers and the citizens.
Okay.
Any other questions on this?
Do we have a motion to advance this?
I would actually need to read it if we need to.
Oh, go right ahead then.
If you want to advance it, then I'll read it, and then you can go from there. If that's acceptable. So ordinance 3330 would be an ordinance amending the Stillwater City Code by amending Chapter 29, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article 1 in general, by creating Section 29, 21, Texting While Driving definitions, and by creating Section 29 dash 22, Texting While Driving.
Discussion. Is there a motion?
Motion to advance to second reading?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance, ordinance number 3330, to second reading. And ordinance number 3330 advances with a vote of five to zero. That moves us to item, to number 11, reports from officers and boards. Mr. Dorman?
Request an executive session for a sentence of 25 years under Section 307(b)(3) for the purpose of confidential communication regarding the purchase or appraisal of real property.
Mr. Galloway?
A couple of things. Do you want to announce that our pavement management program is kind of coming to a close for this season? We do most of that from spring through fall, most of it in the summer. There's been a ton of neighborhood projects. We've also had a lot of projects in several subdivisions. We've been in Berry Creek, and we've been in Eagle Summit, Countryside. More than I can list. They're all loaded on our website if you want to see all the projects that were done this year. Currently, there's some work being done on Maple Street when it reopens. That'll pretty much end the 2015 season, and we'll be geared up to start again next spring. I do want to take the opportunity. We recently, at a council meeting, council confirmed the appointment of a new chief financial officer. Melissa Reams, I'd like to introduce. Melissa comes to us from the Oklahoma Tax Commission. She's our new CFO, and she began work here at City Hall today. So this is her first official council meeting.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Yes.
And I was just going to say, Councilor Weaver was second in line. We had, I had an email from Poland today asking for the mayor's autograph. So I will get that in advance, too. I'm serious, we did. A person collects notable autographs, and they ask for...
They really don't know I'm an ordinary citizen, do they? Okay. Items from city councilors. Do we have any news we want to read?
Well, I would, tagging on to safety. During October, the Stillwater Police will be riding in school buses and monitoring bus stops. And we really, they hope, we hope, everybody hopes that they don't see any violations. But if they do, there is zero tolerance for any violation. Speeding in school zones, failing to stop for school buses, loading or unloading children. Fines are hefty. So if, if your conscience doesn't stop you, let your pocketbook stop you. $249 for passing a loading bus. And our goal is the safety of our children.
Very good goal, very good program. Glad we're doing it. Counselor Zanotti?
I'm all about the events. In case you haven't gotten your Halloween costume ready, the theme for this year's 25th Annual Downtown Halloween Festival is the Monster Mash. The festival is Tuesday, October 27th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. downtown along Main Street. And last year, the USA Today said that this was one of the 10 best costume parties in the U.S. So be thinking about what costume you're going to do for the Monster Mash.
It's a fun time. And the city has partnered with the OSU App Center. And there's a contest to produce a new mobile app that addresses some Stillwater quality of life issues. OSU students have until November 2nd to submit ideas, and details are available on the OSU App Center webpage. And it's just another way that we're still pioneering in anything but still. So we look forward to seeing what the incredibly talented and innovative OSU students create. Anything else, counselors?
I want to say, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and so I'm wearing my purple. As the council knows, my wife is a counselor at Wings of Hope here in Stillwater, domestic violence shelter. And so, just wanted to give thanks to all they do for our communities, surrounding communities. It's unfortunate that we have people that have to do that work, but I know Wings of Hope is a top-notch facility, and we are blessed to have them in our community. And I just want to say thank you to everyone at that organization for all that they do. They are a United Way agency. So if you give to United Way, you give to Wings of Hope. And especially thanks to my wife, who does a fantastic job every day.
And Oklahoma has a very high domestic violence rate. So we are very, very fortunate to have Wings of Hope in our community and working for women in this area.
And men.
And men, too.
Yes.
That's right, that's right. Anything else? Who's on the radio tomorrow?
I am.
Okay.
I will be on the radio.
Okay. That takes us to appointments, and we have an appointment of Tamaki Kameuchi as student representative to the Sister Cities Council. I hope I said that correctly. Do we vote on that?
Yeah, we need a second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to advance a student representative to the Sister Cities Council. Please vote. And that is approved with a vote of five to zero. Ms. Kameuchi is now the new student representative for Sister Cities Council. Okay, I'm going to recess this meeting and go to our SUA meeting, and then we'll come back. I call to order the October 5th, 2015 Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting. Trustees, does anyone wish to remove an item? Or is there a motion to approve the consent docket?
Motion to approve, oh, sorry.
No. May I? I think item B, the agreement with 51 East, I think they have suggested a few comments. Is that correct?
Yes.
And it's not ready for approval this evening.
We just received it this afternoon.
So we'd like to remove that and place that on the October 19th agenda.
Motion to approve, minus item B.
Second.
We have a motion, second to approve the consent docket, minus item B, which will be moved to October 19th. Please vote. And the consent docket is approved with a vote of five to zero. That moves us to public comment on... Never mind. That moves us to...
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, SUA. Please vote. And we are adjourned with a vote of five to zero. I will reconvene the Stillwater City Council meeting. And is there a motion and a second to move into executive session?
Still move. Second.
We have a motion and a second to move into executive session. Please vote. And we will move into executive session with a vote of five to zero.
Whether you are shopping, dining, or doing business in Stillwater, we would like to take the opportunity to let you know about public parking in three areas around Stillwater. Downtown Stillwater, Campus Corner, and the Strip on Washington Street. In these areas, many of the free city parking spots, mostly in the street, are timed. Time ranges from 30 minutes to three hours, Monday through Friday, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And these spaces are not timed on weekends and city-recognized holidays. The purpose for these timed parking spots is to give everyone equal opportunity to a parking space, which is not only good for other people visiting these areas, but is a benefit to the businesses in these areas as well. Now, say for instance, you're cited for overtime parking as you're inside of business. Well, instead of paying the $10 citation, you can easily bring it back to one of more than 200 businesses in these three areas to have the ticket validated. All you have to do is give them the ticket, and that's it. They'll take care of the rest. For more information about public parking spaces, the validation program, or tickets, call the municipal court at the City of Stillwater at 405-742-8255, or visit stillwater.org.
This is Kyle Gibbs with the Stillwater Police Department. When parking in a timed parking space around Stillwater, you may notice a chalk mark on your tire. Parking enforcement uses the chalk marks to monitor vehicles. A parking attendant will mark a vehicle and return later to see if the mark is still present. If your parking time is almost up, move your vehicle to another spot. The attendant will notice the mark changed and faded, and will not write a citation. If your parking time is almost up, do not attempt to remove the mark. Removing the mark will result in a fine of $549. This has been a public service announcement from the Stillwater Police Department and the City of Stillwater.
There's been a serious accident in Greenwich Village on West 10th Street. Twelve firefighters have been injured. Five are reported to be in serious condition and are hospitalized. The fire captain on scene said they were responding to a call that proved to be a false alarm. But looking at the injuries and all the damages, the captain told this reporter, "There's really no such thing as a false alarm." Your local fire department protects you. Take it seriously.
Hello, I'm Officer Howell with the Stillwater Police Department. We just want to tell citizens that no dumpster in the City of Stillwater is for public use, and that each one of these, including trash carts, are assigned to a residence or business. A person cannot dump trash into another one's trash receptacle. This is considered illegal dumping. If a person is caught doing this, he or she is subject to a fine of up to $540. Each dumpster and trash cart within city limits is assigned to someone who is paying for trash and recycling.